Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Hanson Planning Board, May 22nd, 2023 meeting here in the Hanson Select Board Office. The time is 6:30. We're going to call it to order tonight's meeting for our amended agenda. I'm going to announce first the Planning Board recorded preamble hereby called on May 22nd, 2023 meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board to order at 6:30 PM. But also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on the Women Hanson Community Access. Playback times and other related information on this recording can be found at For those that have attended tonight's meeting, please if you make sure that you write down on our attendance sheet, which is right behind you on the table, your name and address of where you're from. The first level, the first item of business on tonight's agenda is the Board reorganization. We recently had a town election and then by protocol states that we reorganize right after the first meeting, right after the town election. So I will hand the meeting over to the Town Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81A, and Article 2-1, Section 1A of the Hanson General Bylaw, the Board is required to reorganize after the, immediately after the first, after the town election, their first meeting, which would be tonight. So that being said, I'd be looking for nominations for Chairperson of the Planning Board.
Motion, Joe Campbell.
Second.
I have motion of Mr. Kement for Mr. Campbell and a second by Mr. Beninato. Any discussion on that motion? Questions? So I will ask for a vote to nominate Mr. Campbell as the Chairman of the Planning Board.
Aye.
Five vote, four vote. That being said, Joe Campbell has now been elected the Chairman of the Hanson Planning Board, and I now turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Town Planner, I appreciate that, and thank you to everybody for your nominations. I appreciate that. I really have enjoyed these times being the Chairman of the Hanson Planning Board, and that's been great, and I thank you for your support, because I couldn't do what I do without the four members sitting beside me, left and right of me. So bringing that back, I'm going to ask for nominations for the Hanson Planning Board Vice Chair.
I'd like a motion for Kevin Cohen.
There's a motion on the floor for Mr. Cohen.
I was just going to say, you think that it should be to somebody else this time?
Well, we have a motion for Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Is this a second by Mr. Beninato, seconded at first. Any discussion in regards to that motion?
No, I think that it should be that way.
So we have a motion on the floor, properly made by Mr. Kement, seconded by Mr. Beninato. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Cohen is the Vice Chair for the Hanson Planning Board.
Thank you, guys.
We also have a position of clerk for our planning board. Is there a motion for clerk?
Yeah, Mr. Beninato.
There's been a motion made for Mr. Beninato for clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded for Mr. Beninato to be clerk for the Planning Board. Is any discussion in regards to that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Beninato is clerk.
And to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kement.
Suggest that we keep our appointments as they were.
Appointments to the subcommittees?
Yes.
Sure, absolutely, it's great, great suggestion. Mr. Kement has a motion on the floor to keep our subcommittee appointments as is. That would be myself from Open Space and OCPC alternate delegate, Mr. Ellis for the High Street Parks Committee, Mr. Cohen for the Economic Development Committee, Mr. Kement for CPC, Community Preservation Committee, and Mr. Beninato for Drainage and Stormwater Committee. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is any discussion in regards to the subcommittee assignments?
Who made the motion?
Mr. Kement.
Kement.
Seconded by Mr. Cohen. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of consent agenda or consent approval of those appointments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We'll all have to go and get sworn in again, correct, Tony? We have to get together, so we'll have to see the Town Clerk for those appointments. Any other topics of discussion in regards to appointments? Right, well, close that section of the agenda, appointments seconded made. Moving on to 6:35, seeing that it's 6:35, public hearing, 6:35 PM, application for improvement to private ways, Snow Street, in conjunction with proposed construction activity at Zero Snow Street. Assessors map one, lot 1282 inclusive, have been filed by Allen DS Trustee in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 81N of the subdivision control law, and Section 12D of the Hanson zoning bylaws. As printed in the, May 11th, Thursday, May 11th?
Fourth.
Say it again.
May 4th.
Yeah, May 11th and the May 4th, Women Hanson Express, legal notice under Town of Hanson, notice of public hearing. Are there any proceedings before we go into tonight's public hearing?
Recuse themselves.
Mr. Ellis has recused himself.
And I have recused myself.
Mr. Kement has recused himself. Thank you very much, gentlemen, we'll come find you in a few moments after we have a brief recess. Let the record show, Mr. Kement and Mr. Ellis have recused themselves from the room. We are now a three-member board with myself, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk present. Town Planner.
Mr. Chair, the applicant filed a request for a continuance this morning, because he was not going to be able to attend, and he also was planning on having legal representation here, and so that, I guess neither one could attend this evening, so through an email, they asked for a continuance. I'll read that into the record. This came from Sharon Tavaz, on behalf of Mr. Diaz, who's the applicant. Dear Mr. DeFrias, I'm responding to your email dated 5/19/2023 for Mr. Diaz. On May 8th, 2023, Mr. Diaz spoke with you regarding the hearing scheduled, and your response was that you did not know if the hearing was advertised. You were also notified that Mr. Diaz was going to be represented by counsel and needed to know when the hearing was scheduled. Mr. Diaz has not received any notice of the hearing and is not available to attend. Please continue the matter accordingly. Mr. Diaz will not be available to respond to any emails prior to 5/24/2023. I am monitoring Mr. Diaz's emails for him, sincerely, Sharon Tavaz. Tentatively, the next Planning Board meeting is the 12th of June, and the one after that is the 26th of June.
Thank you, Town Planner. We see here that we've got the stamp date received, April 24, 2023. Improvement to private ways, what are we as far as the timetable goes?
There is no timetable in the zoning bylaw. The Planning Board has 60 days after the close of the hearing to issue a written decision, but there is no time limit, other than the public hearing had to be advertised 14 days prior to the meeting, which it was done.
So once that's finished and completed, okay. So we need a motion to accept the request for continuance to, I'm assuming we're going to say 612?
612.
We reply back to the applicant, that would be motioned to continue to 612?
Yep.
So I intend a motion to continue the public hearing for tonight's application for improvement to private ways to June 12th, 2023.
I'll make that motion to continue it to 612.
Motion made by Mr. Cohen. There's a second motion made by Mr. Cohen and seconded by Mr. Beninato. Any discussions in regards to the motion? Seeing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 302, and we'll get that notice out to the applicant about the continuance tomorrow night, will you?
Yes.
Absolutely. We'll send that certified mail?
I will send him both certified and via mail.
Perfect, thank you.
There are members of the public, I believe, that might be in attendance for this hearing. So. So what's going to happen is Mr. Diaz asked for a continuous for the public hearing, so that he can come in, he couldn't make it tonight with his attorney. So on the 12th of June, should be in this room unless it's not available, again at 6:30, 6:35. If you have an email address that you'd like to leave, I can send you an email. If not, check on our webpage, on the Planning Board webpage, and the agenda will be posted, usually 48 hours prior to the meeting, which in this case is usually by Thursday before, the Thursday before.
As a button, will we be notified through the mail again, or not?
No, but in this case, you may get, you may get a re-notification, just regular mail, not certified.
Also, if you have anything that you'd like to write into the record, please submit that to the Town Planner, because we could also take that and read anything into the record that evening.
Speak, speak your piece now, or wait.
No, that would be, if you had anything you wanted to have read into the record officially, we could do that at that time.
I'm trying to figure out what's wrong with the road.
I don't think we could talk about it right now, unfortunately. We're bound by the regulations of the law, so. But if you come back on the 12th, unless it continues the hearing again, you'll be able to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Now, the home cooks up.
We're going to take a five-minute recess while we have attendees, we're going to name an email address, and then we're also getting the four members that they can return. Five-minute recess, any questions? Thank you. Seeing that the time is 6:46, we are now going to return back into session to our amended agenda for May 22nd. Next item of business on our agenda, there are no appointments this evening, we're going to go right into board business. OCPC, Open Space, we have to go figure out this way, I'm trying to get in contact with the Town Clerk. Myself and Mr. Clemmons are absolutely still heavily involved. I believe that the last that the Town Clerk had said to me was that she had not had any correspondence from the previous members, or whether they're still involved, so we're waiting on an answer from the other members to find out when we can get active again with the Open Space. But Mr. Clemmons and myself are in agreement, we know master plan's coming up, so it's absolutely going to be an issue. I'm sure that Tony will talk about OCPC, I wasn't able to attend my last meeting. Mr. Ellis?
We're still moving along very slowly. We have an appointment with the irrigation company to look at the irrigation and check the well.
The High Street.
We can resurrect that. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
No update yet, since we haven't met, just, we were just trying to get through the elections, so, yep.
The Economic Development Committee will be meeting this Wednesday.
This Wednesday, yes.
Economic Development Committee is meeting this Wednesday, which will be May 23rd, 24th.
24th.
24th, yes.
So I'll have an update next week.
Perfect, thanks. Mr. Kement?
CPC did not meet due to a lack of a quorum, so I have no news there.
Mr. Beninato?
Sorry.
Mr. Beninato?
Yeah, nothing, yeah, I'm going to try getting everyone together the end of August, by, I'm sorry, the end of June, or July sometime, try to get everyone together in a meeting that's not during the day at 10 o'clock.
Great. See now, we're reorganized and moving into a new, I don't know, board here, I guess? Does anybody see any other boards that maybe we're not covered, or some committees that we're not covered? Hate to ask to over-subcommittee everything, but I don't think anybody has ideas.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Actually, no, Mr. Ellis had talked about Plymouth County Hospital, and I went up there over the weekend with my wife, and we parked in the new parking lot, took a walk through the woods, or anything, field there, and I highly recommend it.
Yes, it's nice.
It's short at the moment, you know, it's to be extended further, but it was a nice walk, and it's nice to see finally something that actually been done up there.
Yeah.
I think it's pretty nice.
Well, thank you. Actually, the trails were done by the Bay Circuit Trail.
Cool. Looks good, you know, it's nice to be able to walk around down there now, you know, yeah, it looks good.
Well, the, some of the issue is, right now, is trying to find money, you know, to do, that we still need to complete plans. We have the complete plan, but it's all on one sheet, which isn't the way of process. It's kind of about six, seven sheets in difference.
Well, I could only suggest, I don't know if I'll be the chairman the next round CPC, but I think you should have a joint meeting with CPC and Plymouth County Hospital group to talk about what can be financed with CPC funds and what can't, you know, it's a worthy conversation, so. So the invitation's open, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, the only thing I knew was, in the past, they just said they had set aside some money, I think it was you mentioned that they have money set aside for the park, I guess.
I wouldn't say for the park specifically, but there's recreation funds that are available for a host of different projects, you know, that has to the board to decide which ones they'd support, but certainly worth the conversation.
Seeing that it's, seeing that 6:50, we're going to move on the agenda for discussion, discussion creation of policy and regulations for the acceptance of private ways to public ways within the Town of Hanson, and inside your packets, you should have received Town of Hanson Policy on Converting Private Streets into Public Ways draft proposal. Town Planner?
So, I know there's been some work done on a policy for just that purpose, converting private streets into public ways. So we sort of brought this back to life, and I sent this over to our Town Council, and Mr. Tallaman reviewed it, and so the copy that you have and that you see up on the screen, based on his edits, and how he recommends that it should be written, and so I've given you basically the redline copy, so you can see what the changes have, what changes were made, and this is how he suggests that the language should go if you move forward with this. The other thing that the Board may wish to consider, the, under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, I believe it's Section 6N, the town can create a bylaw that discusses and explains what work they will do on a private way, but it also is very clear as to what work they will not do, how much they will cover, what they will not cover, and so I don't know if the Board is, has any interest in examining that under that section, in creating a bylaw or proposing a bylaw, or crafting a bylaw, and then proposing it to the Select Board and/or a town meeting, maybe later in the year or next year?
That's in addition to this policy?
Well, that one, I think, would take on its own, it'd be on its own, and it would be an explanation, because that always seems to be a big question, you know, folks will say, well, you know, I need something to catch basin. If it's, unless it's an emergency, the Highway Department is not going to go down there and repair any catch basins, anything on a private way. Creating the bylaw allows for that work to take place, but it's going to be, has to be very specific, clear and concise, so that folks understand that if the town goes in to, let's say, repair a catch basin, they'll do that, but they'll cover, let's say, 50% of the cost, and the expectation might be that the residents pick up the other 50% of the cost, you know, that they're not going to go fix a catch basin, but they might fix a sidewalk, and these tend to be things that are like, let's say, non-emergency. So, you know, you have two choices, we could move forward with this and/or look at a bylaw. And you may want to do both, and, you know, present it, present it along to the Select Board and all the citizens and see, and, yeah, exactly, exactly, see what options they may choose. But again, this is just the edited version of, prepared by Mr. Tallaman, and this is how, what language he felt should be in this policy.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely, Mr. Kement.
Yeah, I'm looking at, just read it really briefly, and probably wrong, but it seems like, at first, it states that the Board of Selectmen is a policy statement for the Board of Selectmen, but as it goes down further, it talks about the Board, to the extent the Board may assess betterments, the Board will determine the shares that each property owner is responsible to pay. So the question I ask is, you know, it's, this is talking about, this is a Board of Selectmen. Now, my concern is, none of them have any real awareness of what the rule and regulations and roadway layout and all sorts of stuff, so I wonder if it would be better to have the Board of Select, in the bylaw at least, to say that the Board of Selectmen would recommend to the Planning Board to go the next steps with the layout of all this stuff, does that make sense?
Could you give me which section that you're reading, Eddie?
Reading, well, I hadn't read from Section 4, at the bottom, Section 4, says, "To the extent the Board may assess betterments, the Board will determine the shares that each property owner is responsible to pay." So I guess my question is, what Board, you know, like, you know, I think we're getting into an area where the Board of Selectmen would be acting like a planning board, and I wonder if that's something they'd prefer not to do?
In Section 9, it says, "Refer to the Planning Board for Planning Board reports."
Okay.
Once all, see if this, we'll see if this fits your request. "Once all easements have been collected, the Board must forward the Planning Board to survey pursuant to General Law 4181I, for the Planning Board to make sure its non-binding report to the Board regarding the proposed layout, including the dimensions, conditions, and characteristics of the street, and its recommendations as to whether the street should become a public way."
So that's nine, and then 10, meaning to lay out the way. So I don't know, I'm just a little confused, you know, I feel like the best way to do it would be for the Board of Selectmen to direct the Planning Board to go about this process. Does that make sense?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, absolutely. Talk with me.
So Section 9 and Section 10 are actually statutory requirements for laying out and acceptance of a private way as a public way. So obviously, I'm sure as you were, the Select Board will vote to lay out the public way.
Right.
And then they will ask for the Planning Board to give a report, which then the Planning Board has 45 days to do so, which we do through the public hearing process. So those two are statutory requirements. One thing is, if there is going to be, if we look at betterments, as you can see, like in Section 12, he struck out a lot of that regarding the betterments. I didn't, I get the sense from him, he didn't feel that that would be something that the town could do, at least with this policy, but I would say that maybe you could have a statement along the lines of, the Select Board could ask for a, if there was a betterment, a report from the Planning Board to determine a betterment, because the Planning Board may be more suited and knowledgeable in determining, because the Board has to determine bond monies for projects.
Right. Well, I don't want to keep going on, I don't have a pocket for, my concern is that the Selectmen have, for the most part, most of them have no experience with the type of discussions that are going to go forward with all of this stuff, so I wonder if the wording could be that, you know, the Selectmen would vote to lay out the roadway, and then turn it over to the Planning Board for the rest of it. And I don't know, is there some wording, or whether Tallaman doesn't think that's a smart idea, or, but, you know, I would like to explore that, because I just feel like there's a lot of politics over there, and there's a lot of things, you know, like I said, they lack the experience for land use.
So you'd like it, correct me if I'm, so you'd like it to, you'd like to see the Planning Board in essence take the lead if there's any betterments to be applied, because of the, because of their experience and their knowledge of roads? Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that.
No, that makes sense. It's bringing it, making sure that the elected experts are in the room where it happens, and then the Select Board would just continue with the procedural side of it.
Right, because if you look at, like, the perfect example is the one that just went to town meeting, right? There was absolutely no discussion at all by anybody about the conditions of those roads, or how much it's going to cost to get those, even though, yes, it was a citizen's petition, but I think the Selectmen should have directed those people to have hearings at the Planning Board, so that a lot of those issues could be at least brought up. If that makes sense, but.
When do you need an answer on this, Tony?
This is open-ended, Mr. Chair. This is, we'll call this a working part of it.
Sure, working part, yeah, absolutely, have it as a runner. So if the general, if the general permits for the 12, we'll put it on this action item for that, for that, you know, so we'll read the policy and do some homework, and then come back with some comments for the 12, hopefully.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, Mr. Kement.
I wonder if it would be worth it to have the Chairman of the Planning Board, maybe the Vice Chair, and Tony, if he's so inclined, to go through a meeting with the Selectmen to discuss this stuff, so what happened at the last town meeting would be less an issue.
Yeah, we can do that. I know, we can do that. We have a vote. I think there's going to be a point where the Selectmen are going to see this and say, yeah, let's talk about it anyway.
To be honest with you, I don't think they have an appetite to be a planning board, you know?
Because a former Planning Board member that's on the Board of Selectmen, so I'm hoping that there would be an appetite.
I don't know about that.
Well, the thing, the thing is, the thing is, they're part of the procedure, you know, we'll say, you know, the, and the procedure, you know, the laws understands that, you know, the Select Board is the, starts the procedure because they, they will say, I don't want to use the, I don't want to use this phrase, because I'm going to be misinterpreted, but we'll say own the town, they're in charge of the town.
Yeah.
But they, but they know enough to say, okay, the Planning Board, they're the road folks, so that's who we want the report from.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the thing, my problem is, when you just say report, right, it really takes the report, they look at it, and go, yeah, I'm going to approve it anyway, you know, so I wonder if it's, you know, something that you can codify it, so that, you know, they're aware that, you know, they're asking us to lay out the roadway, but they're leaving the details of the layout of the roadway to us, and belongs.
And I think over the next months, we're going to have a lot more input with the, with the affect of what happened at town meeting with that road, we'll be able to understand what today's costs are, at least, so that'll be part of the conversation.
Okay.
Any other comments for the policy on converting private ways into public ways policy? Wonderful, so we'll have that continue as a runner on the agenda, if it affords to be not too congested, and we'll talk about it again on the 12. Moving on to administration, approval of the April 24th, 2023, approval of the May 8th, 2023, minutes for those two meetings?
Mm-hmm.
So I'll take that as a consent agenda, if we have that.
So for the April 24th, I think that a slight correction is offered.
They're not doing it as a consent, let's talk about the April 24th.
Yeah. Let's see, I just want to put a correction towards the end, my comment, to remove "not", where it says, that was just someone swearing, not making false claims about someone.
Last page.
Making false claims about someone.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you could just clarify, Mr. Cohen, what page and what paragraph that is?
Page nine.
Page nine, yeah.
Page nine?
That's the one, two, third paragraph, yeah.
What do you need, what would you like to add?
"Not", so it's.
Page?
Making false claims, right?
Well, Mr. Cohen has the line that says, "Mr. Cohen added that was just someone swearing, not making false claims about someone." He would like to have that edited, to reflect, "Mr. Cohen added that was just someone swearing, making false claims about someone." Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. That's correct, yeah.
Where is that, Page Nine, last page, you go and look for it. It's here. Please. I'm gonna look, stop, I'm gonna stop. Okay. Any other corrections for the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three minutes? Everything else is good. No other editor or mitts, taking motion to approve the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made, properly seconded by Mr. Beninato, any discussion regards to that approval, seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'm abstaining.
There's no opposition, so one abstention, four zero one. For the record, I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I have fully reviewed all of the minutes and the recordings for that meeting, and I feel knowledgeable enough about that meeting to be able to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the May eighth, twenty-twenty-three, six thirty PM, meeting minutes, any corrections in regards to May eighth?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May eighth.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Kement in regards to the minutes, approval for the minutes for May eighth, any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next on our administration, town planner update.
Uh, so what we currently have is, we have two invoices for the board to endorse for payment.
They put them in his folder.
So I have an invoice for W. B. Mason, for fees, for.
It'd be for office supplies.
Office price, got it.
And the second invoice is for the public hearing notice.
Can I use your black?
Uh, public hearing notice in the Whitman Hansen Express.
For the record, we're endorsing May sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-two, three hundred sixty dollars and twenty cents, packet number two-two-four-five-three. And the second is endorsement of May ninth, planning ninety dollars, packet number two-two Anything else for the update?
Thank you.
Uh, I'm in the process of, out of the five grants for the one-stop, one has been submitted, I have information finally from our outside consultants with some budget numbers for three of the other ones, so by, hopefully by tomorrow, there's gonna be at least four of them submitted to the state, I'm hoping to get the numbers for the last one, which is the biggest one, very soon, by the end of the week, and hopefully so all five will be, I'm hoping to have all five submitted by the end of this week, if not, four of them out of the five will be submitted by the end of this week.
Thanks.
Um, I'm currently working and just went through a draft of the districts for the MBTA zoning, that OCPC, through a technical assistance grant we received, are our partners on that, and they give us, and guidance, so they reviewed the information I had presented to them, they sent it back with some edits, I've worked on those edits, and now we'll be forwarding it back to them, or returning it to them, tomorrow. Dottie Folgenetti, who is the person that I'm working with on this, unfortunately is going to be leaving OCPC, but she said that she'll hopefully have, take a look at what I've done, I've done, and be able to comment and help, and then that'll be passed on to the next person. So then, once we get to that point, I think it'll be a good point to, say, hold a public hearing sometime during the summer, maybe, and get the public involved, have them come in so they know what, what it's about, inform them, show them that, we'll call it the preliminary draft districts, go over, the state has finally put out a draft bylaw, so we can go over the, all that information with the public and any of the other departments, I'll invite all the other departments on the second floor that may wish to attend, and start getting some input, because we do have a timeline. Also, at the OCPC meeting last, at the end of last month, Dottie Folgenetti did a presentation regarding the MBTA regulations, and one thing that I wasn't aware of, and I learned at that meeting, and have since downloaded the information, the Attorney General has sent out an advisory to all communities, especially the ones that are required to be in compliance with the MBTA regulations. I guess there are some communities that are considering a lawsuit against the state, but until that happens, we have to stay in compliance, and what the AG is saying is that beyond losing the ability to obtain grants, that the AG's office would be pursuing fines under the Fair Housing Act and so forth against towns that do not comply, because they believe that in essence they would be in violation of the law. So the good thing is we're in compliance, and so we have to go through the process, and, but I thought it was interesting that the, that had come out from the Attorney General's office, and I, I did download the letter, and if the board wishes, I can forward it to each one of the members, and you can take a look at it. And Kim has been doing a wonderful job the first couple of weeks here, she's learning a lot, she's picking up pretty quick, and so I have to give her props, she did the last, she did one of those sets of minutes, the May eighth one, right, she did the May eighth minutes, so I think she did a great job.
I can do all this.
And she'll be accompanying me to the Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, but I think she's been doing a fantastic job, and other than that, just trying to plug away at some of this other laundry list, if you will, of things such as getting in touch with developers and so forth, so. The MBTA and the grants have taken up a lot of time, and I'm hoping once, yeah, once I can get those behind me, that I'll have a little more leeway, a little more time to sort of tackle some of these secondary requests.
Perfect.
That's all I have.
Any questions, old town planner? Thank you, Tony. Next Planning Board meeting tentatively scheduled for Monday, June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, is there a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Motion's been by Mr. Ellis, seconded by Mr. Cohen, to have our next Planning Board meeting on Monday, June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, at six thirty PM, more than likely here in the Select Board's meeting room. Any discussion in regards to that?
I won't be here.
Thank you, Mr. Beninato, Mr. Beninato, will, will it not be at that?
I won't, I have my annual training.
You got it, Mr. Beninato will not be here on June twelfth?
I also will not be.
Mr. Ellis will also not be here.
It'll be, it'll be a fun one.
Quiet. Seeing any other, no other discussions? There's a question for what could potentially be on that agenda, can we still have, can we still have a hearing then?
What would be tentatively scheduled for that agenda would be the continuation of this evening and the Meadowbrook subdivision, unless the Planning Board, if the Planning Board, unless the Planning Board intends to approve the Meadowbrook subdivision on that night, and you could have the meeting.
Well, if you, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I could send in a disclosure form and attend that meeting.
Oh, wonderful, because now we can conduct business.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussions in regards to June twelfth? Seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye for our next meeting, June twelfth.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Janice, our next meeting will be June twelfth. Thank you, Tony, thank you, Kim, thank you to all the board members, anything else for the court of the, or?
Uh, one, one thing, Mr. Chair.
One more thing, town planner.
Either at the, well, at the next, at the next meeting where we have a full board, I'll be bringing up the, those letters again that gives the chair the authority to sign on behalf of the board, but that'll be down the road. I just want to make your way.
Because I won't be here. Entertained motion to adjourn?
Okay. Can I, before you adjourn?
Absolutely.
Just wanted to, kind of, quick point of order, is you, you've signed some stuff tonight, right, and we just reorganized, so should we vote to approve you to sign those documents?
We could do a formality if you think it's necessary.
Yeah, just to be, just to be safe.
Mr. Kement's made a suggestion in the form of a motion to, for the board to, motion as a full board, or vote as a full board in regards to my signature on the two vouchers for this evening, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion in regards to that motion, seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Was that a four zero one?
Four zero what? Four zero one. Uh, entertained motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been, oh, I think you have the motion first, I'm sorry, Mr. Ellis made the motion first, seconded by Mr. Kement, any discussion in regards to adjournment, seeing none, all is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven fifteen, have a good night, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you. We're adjourned.